Good morning, Happy New Year. Welcome, everybody. We're called to order the Board of County Commission Work Session for January 7th, 2014. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of our differences among united cultures.
First item on the agenda is to approve the work session agenda. Is there any changes need to come?
None that I know of.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the work session agenda.
Second, sir.
The motion is second to approve the work session agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six of us saying aye. Uh, the motion passes. The purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters of their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1301, we welcome the public to attend the county work session, but there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. Next item on the agenda is to review the January 9th, 2014, regular meeting agenda. John, you want to just take that over and go?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As it is the first meeting in January, um, we are responsible for electing a new chairman to serve for the year. So that'll be the first item on the agenda. We'll typically what we do is we have the seated chairman call the meeting to order and do the pledge, and then first item will be to elect a chairman. And then if there's a change, we move around seats and go on with the meeting. Jump down to the financial reports. In your package, you've got the financial report ending November 30th, 2013. Starting with the general fund, the cash balances July 1st, 2013 was $2,451,424. The revenues year-to-date are $3,132,513. We've done no transfers yet this year. Operating expenditures are $1,402,000. Salaries and benefits are $2,668,890, leaving the cash balances November 30th of $1,911,028. The projected transfers in of $818,010. Projected transfers out of $2,137,252. Projected revenues of $7,405,874. Operating expenses of $2,100,273. Salaries and benefits of $3,526,820. With total, makes the total projections through June 30th of $459,539, leaving the cash balances of June 30th of $2,375,66. Less the required reserve of $2,105,342, leaves a surplus of $2,65,224. The next page is the revenues. So far of the budgeted revenues, we've collected 29.89%, which is the $3,132,513. On the next page is the transfers. We've done 0% of the budgeted transfers year-to-date, which those transfers go to the road department, the airport, the corrections fund, and the shooting range to make them whole, everything above their revenues it costs to operate those departments. We go on to the next page is the road department. Their cash balance is July 1st was $267,657, with year-to-date revenues of $273,384. No transfers have been done. Operating expenditures of $130,330. Salaries and benefits of $547,684, leaves the cash balance at November 30th of a negative $136,973, with projected transfers in of $502,715. Revenues of $740,107. Operating expenditures of $223,680. Salaries and benefits of $745,396. Gives the total projections of $273,746 through June 30th, 2014, leaving the cash balance at June 30th of $136,773, less the required reserve of $130,935, leaves a surplus of $5,838. The next is the corrections fund. We have the cash balance was $407 at July 1st. Year-to-date revenues of $374,285. There's been no transfers done. Operating expenditures year-to-date of $332,407. Salaries and benefits of $836,551. Leaves the cash balance at November 30th of a negative $794,266, with projected transfers in of $1,486,153. Revenues of $577,439. Operating expenditures of $547,940. Salaries and benefits of $689,113, leaves, gives projections of $826,989, which leaves the cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $32,723. I've also given you, um, a separate packet that is just as of November 30th, it did a little comparison to last year, this year, and I gave you the budget as of November 30th, where we are on the budget for each of the departments, the general fund, the road department, and the corrections. Basically what we're showing with this is what we show throughout the country is during the downturned economy, everybody's been dropping their cash balances, they've been having to lay people off, they've been curtailing services where as Grant County, we had prepared properly for this downturn that we've gained services, we've actually gained employees from about 180 employees to 210 employees throughout the downturn of the economy. And our cash balances have dropped, our salaries have come up, but we're getting to a point where we're starting to level that off now, and we should start to gain those cash balances and start building those reserves again like we did in the past to prepare for the next time we get into this situation. Um, we were not, we did not have to lay anybody off, we did not have to curtail any operations. We actually, like I said, grew services during this downturn when everybody else was doing that. And if you look at the cash flow I presented, we're actually slowing that to go, we started the year at $2,451, we're ending the year at $2,370. So we're just less than $100,000 dropping this year in our cash balance, which is pretty good. That means we're pretty much balanced now. The revenues are starting to match those expenditures even with those upturned, uh, services and extra employees and the raises that the commission gave this year. Um, we're, we're starting to match and not drop our cash balance anymore, and it starts, should start to level and gain now, um, is what these reports are showing you, those other reports.
At the same time, we commend the departments and department heads for cutting back and, you know, I know that our, uh, our clerk, you know, cuts back every year and, uh, and willfully too, so, you know, that's, that's why we're sitting where we're at.
Yeah, no, and that's why we're here is, um, when I came in as manager, I got with all the elected officials and department heads, and everybody graciously has been cutting their budgets. Each year we've cut at least 5% out, if not more, out of each budget, and that's why we were able to build that reserve. And now we are able to do some of the projects we've done and do the things we've done, even though everybody else was starting to lay people off, we were able to grow. And, and it's because of everybody. It's not one person. It's everybody that works at the county did this and is doing more than they were doing five years ago in their jobs. They're working harder than ever. Everybody's doing two or three jobs, and I commend all the way down to, uh, our newest employee is, is working hard. So it's, it's a team effort, and we were able to make it through, and now that's what we're kind of showing is we've been dropping, but we're now leveled, and we should start to gain, and, and we've done more.
And, you know, like you said, John, you know, it fits in with what we hear in the news is that across America, that's what's happened since 2008, there was this terrible drop, and then everyone has been riding nuts and bolts for quite a while, then that was just starting to move back up like we are. So I, like Commissioner Rob Ramos stated, I, I commend you and I commend your staff and, um, all of the departmental heads and the elected officials for, for sticking it out, and, um, I'm very proud that we've been able to keep our employees employed. It's, it's a good time. So it looks like we're moving.
Yes.
Forward.
We continue to go, yeah, and like I said, that's, that's the, we've got a good group of people, and, and they continue to work without complaining and understanding that it'll get there. And so I really appreciate everybody.
Thank you, John. John, that's wonderful.
And we'll, if you want this, I can start doing this. We've set up this report, and we can start doing it for you each month. It's just, it doesn't.
A report like that, if it doesn't end at the same time every year, then there's going to be timing issues. Um, I think that would be an excellent report to do on July 1st for the year previous and the pre-year previous to that. But in November, when you've got a big project going, 'cause I'm sitting there thinking, I'll bet you there was some money from the Fair Barn and possibly the convention center and accounts that were, that was already spent, that makes that, that $100,000 totally irrelevant. So.
Yeah, and then that's why I had the discussion with Commissioner Hall is it's a, it's a hard report to read, 'cause you can't read it for the face value, because there's things that happened this year that didn't happen last year that causes our cash balance to drop. We could have gotten a grant where we got the money upfront instead of being reimbursable, so it caused our cash balance to jump higher, and then you spend that money and it drops, and so it was a false beginning balance that you started with, and so there's a lot of things at play. And that's why I just kind of hit the high point of is that we're seeing that trend where we've, we've slowly dropped that cash balance over the years, but now it's leveled off. And so that's how you kind of have to use that is that as long as there's nothing that dramatically sticks out at you like we were positive this year and now we're a huge negative balance in something, then there's an issue. And that's how I look at it is just to pick out if there's something that dramatically went wrong. Otherwise, it, you can't read it for the face value and say, "Cash balance is going down, something's wrong." Well, it's, that doesn't, that's not necessarily what it means.
Is your woman here to you?
It's hot.
Can we turn that down a little bit?
She said it's hot.
We just, we said it was hot. Would you turn down that? I'm sorry?
It's hot whether you talk this way or that way, it's hot.
Okay. So moving on, John.
Now, the next item is the expenditure report. You have it in your packet. It's the $2,818,036. The report doesn't print that summary like we used to give you. I'm gonna have Randy do me a new one that does that, um, for you on Thursday. What are major expenditures that cause this balance? It's, it's for a long, a month period of time. It's, um, you're at the holidays, we have a pay, extra pay period. Um, we changed our insurances, and so we had to pay a binder payment upfront to, um, the new insurance companies. And so what happened in this month is we had our normal insurance payments of about $300,000. Then we had binder payments to the new insurance companies of $300,000. So we doubled our insurance, so we've got about $600,000 in the month of December in insurance cost, which brings that balance down to 2:1. Um, the extra payroll, um, we didn't have any extraordinary projects going on. We're dying down. The front of the building, as you see, is finishing up. Mr. Moore is just a patch to lay in in front of the parking spaces out there, and then we're gonna start working on, uh, looking at some options for the parking lot. The Fair Barn was done. We're getting ready to go out for bid in a little while for the new additions. So, uh, other than that, it's, it's just main, end of the year, people finishing up holiday pay. We had, uh, four holidays in this, in this expenditure report. So, um, that's the major, um, expenditures at that time. But I'll get Randy to run us the report that summarizes it by fund like we used to have in the back, because this now, with one of the updates, it doesn't. It now summarizes it by the check and by the account, not by the fund. And the fund is a lot easier to read, to just look at the fund, and you can see which funds are doing it. So we will, I'll get him to run that and get it to you for Thursday.
Maybe for Wednesday, so we can go through it for Thursday.
Yeah, well, I'll run it today, and we'll get it to you. I'll put it in your boxes.
Thank you.
Um, the next item, uh, new business is the Department of Health EMS Fund Act applications. This is, we did one on the last meeting, the department got it in early. This is for Tyrone Volunteer Fire and Rescue, for the White Signal, the Wind Canyon, um, flying a Hachita. And then I also have to add to it that we got latest PA that will be adding to that, the PA Fire Department EMS. And these are their applications they do each year to ask for their funding to go for their departments. The Tyrone Fire Station, the White Signal, is asking for, um, $8,565 out of the EMS funds. Um, the Flying A Wind Canyon District is $4,455. The Hachita Station is $6,900. And these funds go to buy equipment and do training for their EMS personnel. And then the PA is $3,000 for supplies and first responder certification. And so we'll add that one too. It just came in like, we got it yesterday morning. The next is the election of the officers. Each year, um, the commission is required to approve, accept the election of the officers in each of the fire departments. They hold their elections at the end of the fiscal year, or the calendar year each year, and then provide them to you. So in your package, you have the PA, Sapiro, Upper Membras, Tyrone, Whiskey Creek, Santa Rita, Fort Beard, Lower Membras, and Cliff Gila Fire Departments, their officers, um, for your approval. So it doesn't, there's not a lot of changes in the departments. We did have a change in the Membras area. The chief that was there, um, it was too much for him to be able to perform the duties, and there was another member that stepped up and took over those responsibilities. So that's really, I think, the only department. Um, Mr. Mize, um, Officer Mize's father is a volunteer down there in the Membras, and he took over for that department, for the Upper Membras. And so I believe he's in the upper, right?
Yep.
Randy? He's at Sapiro, two Sapiros. Oh, and it looks like they're gonna have, uh, go back to, well, he's a battalion chief. Marty Mize is the chief, and then Mr. Powers, who used to be chief, is a battalion chief.
I did read that, Rob.
So, yeah, he's right above it. It's confusing, but Marty Mize is the, is the chief, and Ed Powers, who used to be the chief there, is a battalion, and he helps out a lot. The next item is the reappointment of Alicia Edwards and Marilyn Alcorn to the Food Policy Council for a three-year term. Uh, so it's a council that was created by a previous commission. Um, they are working on trying to create policy to give healthier choices, uh, food. Um, they look at supporting different legislation. They come to the commission usually and ask for resolutions to support legislation that's out there, and it's, that's basically been their focus, is just to try and increase the choices of healthy foods, um, and also make it easier for local growers to provide foods to businesses, schools, things like that. It's been made to their goal. Anthony Gutierrez attends those meetings and works with that group. Um, and they're a bunch of go-getters. They're, they're a dedicated group of people on a mission there. Um, the next is the audit for June 30th, 2013. Um, it's required that the commission accept the audit in an open meeting. Um, it's been up to the state auditor's office. It's been approved by the state auditor, it's been sent back to us. It's actually, you know, out on his website. Um, we received an unqualified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get. Means you didn't have any issues. We, when you go to the back, it's page one in the seven, is the findings. Um, you know, he has a summary of the audit results, which he expresses an unmodified opinion on financial statements. There's no significant deficiencies, um, no instances of non-compliance, no significant deficiencies related to federal program. The audit report on compliance for major federal program awards is an unmodified opinion. Um, no audit findings that are required to be reported in accordance with the 510 circulars and, uh, programs tested. They tested, um, border operations, the airport improvement grants, CFDA's, federal transit capital improvement grants, and economic adjustment assistance grants. Um, and then we did not qualify as a low-risk auditee. So there's, we don't have the risk. Um, the audit findings that we have, the one that's in there, that first one, oh, seven dash four, it's a purchasing one that has been there since 2007. It's, and we've talked about in the past, it's kind of related to is that when they pull our payments, they find somebody may have bought something and gotten a PO afterwards. Uh, may have bought something on their credit card, more than $500, and they got a PO later, and so it's been a violation of it. It's a hard, with as many transactions, and the auditor stated this in his action conference, with as many transactions as we do, it's hard to stop them unless you had a central purchasing. We're only, only that department purchased. Um, you know, say if Jacob Zamora was the only one that could buy anything, you had to go to him, then you can kind of stop those things. It's very hard with the fire departments we have buying, everybody that's out there buying, um, it's really hard to get rid of that. Um, I mean, I guess basically if you get rid of it is because you got lucky and they didn't pull the one where somebody bought something and got a PO later, because it's happening, I think, in every business that does purchasing on a mass scales like we do and doesn't have a huge purchasing department.
It doesn't mean it's not important, but that's there for purpose.
No.
So that people don't go out and buy stuff without any, any authority.
No, and we work at trying to close down those loophole, you know, trying to close things down. We shut the P cards down to $500 to where you couldn't spend more than $500, because on the credit cards, if you're up to $500, you don't need a PO. Over $500, you do. So we've made it to where an employee can't spend more than $500. So we've, we've closed it down. It's just we're, slowly but surely, we're, we're getting there. Um, the next is oh, seven dash three is the property tax schedule. This is one that the auditor talks about that most, most counties in the state have this finding, should have this finding, because the auditor requires you have a property tax schedule that nobody really can do. We're getting close to producing that schedule out of our new system that we've got. Um, they're just trying to work out the bugs. The issue with it, this year he thought we had it produced for the, the auditors, and nobody uses it. We don't send it up. You just have to have this aging report is what it is. Um, the report brings in, is bringing in a different value than what the assessor is saying is a certified value. And so it's, it, what we, we think we found is that it's bringing in the value before exemptions, not after exemptions. So it's not a correct statement of our accounts receivable for the 10-year period. So we're working on trying to fix that report, and if we can get that fixed, then we shouldn't have that finding, 'cause then we do have 10 years in the system, and the report's printing. It's just, when you look at it, it, it doesn't match up to what Mary says is a certified values, 'cause she's passing a certified value that is after all of her exemptions and what she's saying the treasurer should bill for. This report is taking before her, her certified value before her exemptions, is what we're thinking happened. Um, the next is the solid waste receivables. Um, this has been one. Um, they put it on there in 2011. Um, I think we've got it. We've done the liens now, was the problem back then, is that the, the person running that hadn't put the liens on. And part of what they're saying is we have a significant delinquent balance. We, we know that. We've been working on trying to come up with ways, um, that balance didn't grow overnight. It's grown.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's, it's a problem. The chairman has been part of discussions and working on stuff with association of counties to help stop illegal dumping throughout, and that, it's kind of the fear is if you, almost, almost to get rid of these types of things, you have to make it free. Um, because, and, so we're trying to figure out ways, can, how can we do this to eliminate having to bill people $5 a month, because that's not working, obviously, if we have a big balance. 'Cause you get people that don't live here and, or come for a little bit and say, "I only generate trash once a month. I do one bag." Well, it, it's gotta go somewhere, and we're paying the tipping fees, and, and we have to have ordinance out there, and we can't take into consideration every scenario.
And it's also too bad that known in there that, I mean, our chairman has really gone out of the dimmer, try and get this corrected throughout the state, and, and, but, I mean, we can't, we can't know that in there, but, uh, we, we've done our part.
Exactly. We've worked, we've been trying, but we're trying to find, every time we think we're getting close, we find a loophole in that system that's not gonna work for us, or something, or a problem. So, and the auditor understands it to where this isn't a significant, it's another. It's, it's not a significant deficiency. It doesn't affect us in any way. It's just something that's there. Um, and then the only new one that we have for this year is the personnel records. When they did an audit of our personnel files, um, we're required to keep I9s, which is a proof of citizenship to be able to work in the US. We had these forms. What we found, what the auditor found is there was instances where it, somebody might not have taken two forms of ID. They took the driver's license and didn't get a second form of ID. They might have signed in the wrong spot on the wrong line. Um, and so we've since gone through and corrected those. Denise has worked with Renee. We've gotten, corrected that, so we shouldn't have that issue next year. Um, it, it's kind of where the auditor went ahead and put it as a finance, because the federal government's now starting to come down and look at those things, and if you get caught, you can get billed for each one that you have that's in error. And so it was kind of him trying to help us out, saying, "Look, you've got a problem. Why don't you fix this before you get fined for it?" And so we've already gotten it taken care of. And that's what it was. It's, um, we didn't have anybody that was illegal working here. It just, we didn't have the right signature in the right spot, or if it wasn't dated properly, then you didn't get it. Um, that's what happened with those. And so that's, that's all we had. Um, other than that, it's pretty good. The other findings that you see past that on pages 29, 30, um, are, and 31, are the findings that belong to the component unit, which is the hospital. Their audit becomes part of our audit. And so they, uh, that's why those are in there. It's not ours, it's theirs, it has to be there, but we've gotten, like I said, it's a good, it's on time. It does not have any of the issues that the governor referenced in her executive order trying to stop capital outlay. So we should have no problems with any funding.
Sure.
If it's there, unless they come up with something new, and there's a new twist. But we've, we've met all the requirements of all the old executive orders, and so there should be no issues. So.
Well, I'm glad to see, very glad to see that it's on time. I know it's been a few years running, and now we're on time again, so we've gotta keep it that way.
No, we intend to. We intend to. Um, so the next.
We're a few years behind you. We're not even worth it.
That's right. So, yeah. Well, in the state, I was at LFC, and the Secretary of DFA made a comment that he's balanced the current transactions that they're doing, but they still don't know if they're off $70 million or $400 million on the state check account, because they haven't worried about that back stuff. They're just worried about when the current administration, and they've balanced that. But they don't know what their beginning balance is. And, and so I, I guess if you got checks in the checkbook, that means you got money. Just keep writing. So, so that's, that's what his comment was to LFC. So they still haven't balanced at the state level from last administration to this administration. Um, the next is to ratify the state of New Mexico Department of Finance Administration Capital Appropriation Project. This is the project we talked about at the last meeting. Uh, the money that was given to us by the representative center for doing the sheriff's vault and improvements to this admin building that we've been fighting to get this agreement. And I made the trip up to Santa Fe after the last commission meeting and was able to get the signed agreement, and signed it up there and had it notarized, and got them to sign and notarize it, so we have an effective agreement. And because it's over the $20,000, um, it was $300,000, we're bringing it in front of you for ratification, because I have authority for 20, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to get it signed by the director of local government division and, and get an agreement. So I signed it and, on behalf of the commission, and brought it back for ratification. And we'll be starting on that project. Kevin has given me a proposal, and he'll start working on putting together plans to do that project now, here in the next few months. Hopefully go out for bid and get that going. The next item is appoint one member and an alternate to the area transit authority board. There's nothing in your packet on this, what this is, is the, when we started the, there's the Southwest RTD, and then there is a separate JPA that involves the town of Silver City, Grant County, Luna County, and Dimon, is it? And it's called the Area Transit Authority. It requires a representative and a alternate to be on that board. So on the, our Southwest RTD board currently is Commissioner Ramos is the member, and I think I'm the alternate. We don't have one on this, so we need to appoint one on this. And this is still kind of, I mean.
There. It's. Yeah. It doesn't get us through.
We have been working with the Southwest RTD formally, and then the, well, I guess it's still in place, but, and also the, the members of the authority board under the JPA, and trying to figure out what sort of group they're going to be. And recently, they've decided, some of them have decided that they are not interested in the JPA now, and they prefer to, for us to just run the bus service, and then contract with the different entities. So now we're, now we're.
When you say contract, you mean send them an invoice for what we do in their area?
Yeah, they want, just like any other services contract, normally, we're the ones looking for, you know, paying for the service, but in this situation, we'd be providing the service, and they would pay us as, you know, a service provider like, like we do normally. So that, that's a new option that we're looking at, it's probably going to take a little while. In the meantime, we do have this old JPA from two thousand and seven that we're working under, and that's why we need to appoint a couple members on there, and, and they will assist along with John and I, and the rest of the board, in figuring out how do we wind down this old JPA, and start new with whatever we're going to do. But I, yeah, I can't guarantee exactly what it's going to be, and we'll bring it to you once we have something more hammered out. But, you know, for now, the buses are running fine, and the services are still.
You choose. It's by choice, in the past, what we did is, we appointed, under the South, under the Southwest RTD, it's required to be an elected official, so it has to be a commissioner, it has to be the member, the voting member, and the alternate can be anybody.
And I think under the JPA also that it's supposed to be someone from the government, as opposed to just somebody in the public.
Yeah, okay.
So.
I, but it could be an employee.
My, my idea was that it would be most convenient, especially since the county is running the bus service, if John could actually be the member, and Randy is really involved now, since he's over that department, that he could be the alternate, maybe?
Sure.
Unless you all have.
Obviously, if it has to be elected official, I'd be more than happy to do it, and Randy could be my alternate, being that he is involved.
Excellent driver.
Oh, yeah, he's a great driver.
And then I think the Southwest RTD is still meeting.
Yes.
But you wouldn't be required, if John and Randy were chosen, you wouldn't be required to go to these authority board meetings, too. And I know.
Does that mean that Randy's been driving the bus, then?
Yes.
Other duties is assigned, he can do whatever you need him to do.
All right.
So, this next one, I'm going to be, you tell me. So, next is the resolutions. Fourteen dash zero one is the open meeting resolution for two thousand and fourteen. I'll go ahead and let Abby tell you what changes we made from last year.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I have a question for you. Convenience, it's really minor changes. Remember, we did the amendment back when the legislative changed the open meetings act. This is almost the same verbatim as the amended resolution that we passed last time, except under paragraphs ten, eleven, and twelve on page two. I changed that just a little bit, because what we had before was that for, to meet, to meet our notice requirement, that we were putting a draft agenda every time in our publication in the newspaper. And I thought I would go out and put what the law actually requires, which is you can either do the, publish the agenda, or you can give information on how to obtain the agenda. I was just thinking, there may be times when we need that option, and it also might save us a little money, if we weren't publishing it every time. Anyway, so it's just an alternate form of notification in there. But that was the only change from the one you adopted shortly after July, I believe, or before.
Yeah, we.
Take a few questions.
Yeah, and we have the meeting dates and times the same as they were in the last one, we haven't changed that. So if that wishes to change, we can make that change on Thursday, or if you want. I don't know. The next is a resolution fourteen dash oh-two, which is the inmate orientation policy for two thousand and fourteen. The commission is the policymaking body, so any department makes recommendation to the commission for a policy, and then it has to be approved. Abby's prepared a resolution, I'll let her, let you know how we got to here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, the, the administration at the jail, Mr. Carrillo and Mr. Andesola have been working on revising our policies, and it's been a really big project. And the first piece of that is this inmate orientation policy that they would like to request that you adopt. And I don't think there's going to be any changes before Thursday, I think this is the final, but we'll point out any changes that come up. Rather than just go through the whole thing, just maybe if you wanted to review it before Thursday, and then if you have any questions, we can answer those. It's basically what it says, it is, it gives the inmates an overview of, you know, what they can do, what they can't do, what they can have in their cell, what they can't have in their cell. Just puts it all up front for them as they come in, so that they know, you know, how to behave, and the rules when they come in, hopefully so they can avoid any discipline or things like that. Mr. Carrillo, do you have anything you want to add?
Mr. Chairman, commission members. For the purpose of the policy is, again, as Abby has discussed with you, we felt that this wasn't a priority issue, and the purpose of the policy is to help us, and it's one of the methods to control the safety and security of the facility in the back. Anybody that's booked into the facility, they're going to have to adhere to the rules, regulations, procedures, posted notices, and any verbal directions, and as you go through it, you'll see it pretty much mandates what their rights are, and what they can and can't have, and basically, the reason we were, we needed this, and we felt it was a priority, is because we did have some inmates in the back that would, they would question why we were doing, what we were doing, as even there's discipline, or any of the property and stuff that was taken back here. So we felt that we needed, we need to put this together, we need to get it approved. And so this way, what we're, our intent is, is to go ahead and laminate this and put in each one of the cell blocks. So as the inmates come in, they're given a copy of this, they know what it is, and then it's posted in each one of the cell blocks. And we're hoping that with this policy itself, and just, again, it'll be one of the methods to help us with safety and security of the facility in the back. Help them for any questions?
Sure. Right, was the, our new medical program, is it addressed in this policy here, or in a separate one?
Um, it is, it is. Policy, and we do have, we do have a policy in here as far as the hygiene, and, you know, some of the, some of the other issues. It briefly touches on, on, you know, what their legal right is as far as their healthcare and stuff, but we do have a separate medical policy that was put together by the contractors, and this spells out everything. And basically, what we do is we provide all the medical services, and as I go through my report, you'll see that we have three of the transports that we had to do on medical, and that was only because the inmates themselves, they wanted to refer themselves to an outside medical facility, which is, I mean, they can do that as long as they pay for it. We're no longer paying for those, so. But it does touch on that, and we do, as we go through the rest of the policies and procedures, we'll put that, all that together, and we'll have that all into one contained unit, and it'll, it'll spell out everything.
There'll be something that this commission would need to address, right?
It's the policy.
Yeah.
The inmate is also reviewing these policies before they come before you as well.
Good.
The next item is resolution fourteen dash three, which is authorizing approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval for New Mexico Finance Authority for Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department. Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department for the station at Tyrone Townsite has been looking at doing an expansion, they need to add restrooms and a training room to make it a true main station, so they don't lose that designation. So they've been working with, originally, we were working with Mr. Redford, but he is now retired, and so now they've transitioned over to working with Mr. Robinson, our architect that we have, and he's working with them to go in front of their homeowners association for the improvement and design what they need. And they want to go to Finance Authority with a loan, and so part of that process is, the commission has to approve a resolution to enter into, to, to let us submit the application and go forward with the process of that loan with Finance Authority. It would be paid off by the fire funds, they've gotten approval from the state fire marshal's office to use their fire funds. So this is just one of the steps, and we want to get it in front of you now, even though the full applications aren't ready to be submitted, they're finalizing the costs in them, so that we can try and make their February meeting to get this on to the New Mexico Finance Authority meeting for approval. And so that's why we brought it to you now. The next item is resolution fourteen dash zero-four, same thing, but it's for Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department, this is one we've been working on. We're getting close, we've got the application prepared, we're waiting on the property, we're trading a piece of property with Freeport McMoran to put this station in a location that will be better to serve the community out there. And so we're just waiting to finalize that, once we finalize that, we'll be able to go forward with the loan process. We've got a rough estimate of costs, we just, again, trying to meet the February meeting if we get everything from the mining company that we're requesting to look at. Mr. Robinson's reviewing things as they come in, it's just we're down to a few pieces we can't go forward without. So if we get those, we'll be prepared with this resolution done to go into their February meeting. If not, then we'll, they meet once a month, and we'll just get on their meeting as we can. Fire chief's ready to go, he's anxious to get this done for about the last two years. It hasn't seemed like taking to get this deal done. The next item is the indigent claims for December thirty-first. There are one thousand thirty-one claims totaling six hundred and ninety-six thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. These are all sole community provider type of claims, none of them are the indigent piece, the outer county claim. This is still, you know, Brian will probably touch on it in his report a little bit, still not a clear what's going to happen. LFC touched on it a little bit, then there was a presentation, there's a meeting on the seventeenth, sixteenth, sixteenth, in front of Senate Finance Committee to discuss hospital funding, what's going to happen, where are we going to go, what are we going to do? The Association of Counties will be present at that meeting, I think the hospitals are sending representatives to that meeting. It's, not much has changed since the last time we discussed it. Their, the state is still proposing their one-eighth, taking the one-eighth increment of tax. The Association of Counties has come up with a proposal to say that they take a sixteenth of that eighth, half of that first eighth. Nobody has really come up with an answer as to, when they give all this money over to the managed care organizations to match the federal dollars, what happens? Because they have no authority over those individuals. I was talking with Brian last night, and it, not, you know, just kind of talking about it, why can't we just do the process we did with the state, where we sent a quarterly payment and they reimbursed us, why can't we switch that process to the managed care organizations, where the hospital sends up their information, the managed care organization can say, this is how much you get, this is your match, then we send them the payment, and then they send back the, the monies? I don't know why we have to intercept it and give it all over to them, because it's, I think it's forty million dollars throughout the state they want to hand over to these groups, then they have no authority. So as Brian's reported in the past, as he went through his revenue streams, if they code a bill wrong, he doesn't get reimbursed, and if he doesn't get it adjusted in the timeframe they give him, then he doesn't get reimbursed at all. So is that what's going to happen with the managed care organizations with the sole community provider funds? And then if that happens, and there's an excess of money at the end of the year, who gets it? Do these private companies benefit from all the taxpayers of the state of New Mexico and just get to keep this money? If, if that's the case, then it's going to be in their best interest to deny as many claims as they can, so they have a bigger bonus at the end of the year. And, and people haven't outlined that, and, and those are the things that worry me about what they're, they're talking about, is just because there's no control. And I, and I think there's a better way, like I said, just do what we were doing with the federal, with the health services, the human services department, and do it with the managed care organizations.
And our legislators, they've been advised of this, and, and talked to about some of the options that we may have, and some of the pitfalls that you talked about, about these people hanging on with the money?
Yeah, we, we've had discussions with them, I've had discussions with members of the Legislative Finance Committee when I went up to Santa Fe that week, and sat down with a few of them. They're not clear as well, it seems like, you know, they understand, I think everybody understands we need to do something, because it's a hundred and fifty million dollars that come into the state as match money for this, and we don't want to lose those monies, because then it'll be really detrimental to the hospitals and healthcare in the, in, in the state. But nobody's given them a clear answer, nobody will answer the questions. Every time you talk to the human services department, they won't answer the questions. They, they kind of dance around the question, they, and they're not, don't present it very clearly, because.
There's a county and state government, so we have to protect those monies, we have to make sure that in fact, the money's going where it's supposed to be going.
Yeah, and.
For the taxpayers.
Yeah, and the, and the intercept agreements, I mean, we do the intercept agreements right now, there's been talk that people are upset about intercept agreements, well, we do intercept agreements on these loans, right now. So the intercepts aren't a real big thing, the problem is, is the way they write it, if they write the legislature, then all of a sudden, this one-eighth starts going to human services department for them to pass over, well, do they get to take an administrative fee out of it? If the tax and rev has taken administrative fee, then do they get to take one, then does the managed care organizations get to take one? And then if all the money's not needed for the managed care organizations, does human services department now build their budget, because they get to keep this money? It's excess they don't have to pay over? I mean, there's so many.
They just don't answer those questions. When I'm in there with the Assistant Secretary of Health and Human Services, he will not answer those questions. And I'm not sure he's not answering to be disingenuous, I don't think he knows the answers to those questions.
I think they're just trying to rush into it too fast, it hasn't been thought through, until people don't understand what all the answers are, and what all the implications can be, and they just want something. They're just trying to give something, they're afraid, and they want to give something, and in, in my own opinion, I think the human services department also, they, we got into this situation because of them miscalculating formulas, they're trying to wash their hands of it. They want to, next time this goes bad, they want to say, ooh, it wasn't us, it was all those guys, you know? And so they're making sure that the policy, the proposal they're putting forward keeps them clean, at the end of the day. And they don't care where the rest of the dirt falls, they just make sure they're clean. And so, there's a lot of things, I know Brian's watching it very closely, and his staff, he's got people constantly going up there whenever there's a meeting, being on conference calls, every time he and I talk, this is one of the subjects we talk about, it just, there's no clear answer yet.
So we just don't know?
We don't know, we'll see. We got thirty days, they got thirty days to find out, starting January ninth, January twenty-first.
It'll be an exciting session, that's what I can tell you. Okay, we'll stand for county reports, and Brian, I'm going to let you go.
Okay, we'll stand for county reports. So Brian, I'm gonna let you go first today.
Chairman and Commissioners, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
To everyone, Happy New Year to our community. Real short report. Want to highlight a couple of things. This is an update, one of our, not big construction projects, but significant in that it impacts our patient care, is our linear accelerator replacement. That's our radiation treatment device. It's a big, expensive machine. As a reminder, this is the monies that we got from last year's legislative session. And with the help of lots of people, we're waiting for our plans to be approved in Santa Fe right now. We expect that any day. Then we'll be able to plot out the rest of our plan, our construction plan, and the commissioning of the machine. It will result in some disruption of our radiation therapy services and some disruption to the treatment of our community. And we'll be letting you know what those exact dates are, and we should know probably in this next month, in next month's report. I want to give you a quick update on an item that we've spoken about a couple times. Has to do with our revenue cycle. We've identified some issues and we've spoken to our chair and our commissioners about the fact that we have a significant amount of money tied up in our revenue cycle. One area of it was in our coding area. We were short coders. There were some other issues going on. That number had climbed as high as twenty million dollars, stuck in a section of our revenue cycle waiting to be coded so it can go to billing to be billed. So we've reported on that, I think, the last two months. About a month and a half ago, it was about, up to about twenty million dollars. It's down to approximately ten million dollars as of today. And so that's continuing in the right direction. And we expect over the next month or so, that to that to be where it should be, which is about two to five million dollars waiting to be coded. So that money was twenty million, it's now ten. That money has been turned into our business office, and now it's out in the billing cycle, out to insurance companies, being reviewed. And that money should be coming back into our bottom line in the next thirty to sixty days. So I just wanted to update you, that process is heading in the right direction. From a financial perspective, now remember, we're always, at least, we're about a month behind with our reports. So this is the closeout as of November. As of November, we did have a bottom line. We had about a twenty-three thousand dollar bottom line, very slim, but that is a positive bottom line. Our cash continued to drop very slightly. Like the county, though, we believe we've stabilized the cash side of our financial equation. In the beginning of the calendar year two thousand thirteen, we were at about a hundred and fifty days cash. By the time August came around, our transition, we had dropped from a hundred and fifty to about a hundred and eight days. So August was a hundred and eight days. September was a hundred and one days. October was ninety-eight. November was ninety-seven. I think as of December, we're back up around a hundred. Don't have that final number. So we feel like we've stabilized at around that one hundred, ninety-eight, ninety-seven days in cash. That's what we were expecting and that's where we're at at this point. And hopefully that'll remain stable. And hopefully, as we get through this next half of the calendar year, we'll be able to see where our new set point is. There's a lot of unknowns. Mr. Sorry was speaking about, obviously, sole community provider, still the same issues. We'll know in the next thirty days. There's also a lot of uncertainty around our health care exchanges, our insurance exchanges, and the expanded Medicaid program, Centennial Care, which we're all pretty familiar with. And in these next month or two, we'll start, that'll start to sort out. And we'll start to see what the impact is on our hospital from a financial standpoint, but more importantly, to our community. And hopefully, more people being able to access timely care. So, you know, in these next few months, there'll be some, I think, more significant updates regarding those. That's, I think, all the major things I wanted to discuss today. And I stand for questions.
Any questions? Get off easy today, Brian. Thank you very much for coming.
Appreciate it.
Chairman, please remember, respectfully submit my report for January two thousand fourteen. This will be for the month of December of two thousand thirteen. I remember one of the policies and procedures, as we discussed earlier, Abby's been really helping us out with the policy procedures. They're quite lengthy. We have submitted them, so she's really helping us because she has to go through each section by section. She's been working very hard on those. One thing that I do want to mention is the policy procedures are obviously going to be a living document. We're getting information. Again, as the legislative session is coming on, we're also being affected by some of the policies and some of the procedures and some of the mandates that may come up concerning corrections. And this is throughout the state. And a couple of those, a couple of those areas are going to be in the special, in the areas of special need inmates and also segregation. So we're looking to find out. We've been in contact with NMAC. We've been talking with some of the committee members from NMAC because if these two, especially these two areas, if they change to those two areas, they're going to put more demands on the correction facilities throughout the state, which may require additional personnel. So we're kind of looking at those, see what they're going to do. We are in compliance right now with both of those, with our medical health people. They're helping us with special needs inmates. And also, we've been following the current mandate as far as segregation is concerned, so we're staying on top of that. But just to let you know, in case there are some changes, we may, it's going to affect facilities across the state. Item number two is the detention facility update. Right now, the detention facility currently does have, we do not have any vacancies. We just hired our last applicant, and he'll be scheduled to start up pretty quick. He'll go through the FTO training. We have seen a decline in inmate population during the month of December and also a slight decline in November. This decline, what I've been looking at for the last couple of months, we've had anywhere from fifteen to twenty less inmates than we have in the last couple of months. I guess the holidays, I really don't know.
Did you go to pink uniforms or anything like that?
I'm sorry, sir?
Did you go to pink?
We considered that. It wasn't something that, an option that we decided to go through with. But we have seen a decline. And again, right now, currently, we have fifty inmates and we're usually running about seventy, anywhere seventy and above. So there has been a decline the last couple of months, which is good. And I hope it continues, maybe a reflection on our law enforcement people doing a good job out there and keeping people in all the trouble. But as long as they continue doing that, we'll be happy if they'll help us over at the facility. The facility assessment, again, we're continuing with the assessment. We've been working on that. We meet at least once a month. We get together with the sergeants and we go over some of the assessment needs and stuff, so we're staying on top of that. Our training update, we will be testing for two permanent sergeants positions. This will be January the fifteenth. We have eight candidates who have put in their application. And out of the eight, we will be promoting two permanent sergeants, and then they will be required to attend the first-line supervisor training. Newly hired applicants will also, they'll be given their defensive training tactic. It'll be the second week of January. Lieutenant Aguirre has taken over a lot of the training requirements, and he's staying on top of that. And right now, he's scheduling the remainder of this year to bring everybody up to staff and bring all those that need to be recertified. He's already scheduling the training for that to make sure that everybody that needs to be certified with their forty hours, he's going to have that taken care of for us and get that scheduled. And field training program's working really well. We do have a couple of people, individuals, that we did send to field training. They're certified field training officers. We send all of our new applicants with them. And then we also have, one of the officers that has returned back, has been gone for several years. This employee came back, so we decided that we would want to send her back to the same field training because a lot has changed. So we just didn't want to put this employee back there and, you know, just let her go by, you know, by herself whenever she came on. So she's also attending the field training program and going through that. The inmate support program, myself and Administrator Elwell did do the presentation before the prospectors. And we got through that. We had some questions that were answered, and it was, it seemed very positive. What we're awaiting now is possibly hearing back. We may have to go before, depending upon how the, how the program itself is going through the session, we may have to be going, go back up before committee members and testify before them to, hopefully, we can get the funding going for our inmate support program. Recognition program, we haven't received any nominations this month. Our detention statistics, the average daily population for the month of December. And what I did was, because of when the commission meetings fall, it's not always the entire month, but I try and get to thirty days. So this was from November the ninth to date, which would have been yesterday. So those statistics show the average daily population is fifty inmates. It's seven less than, seventeen less than last month. The high population males is forty-eight, eleven less than last month. High population females is fifteen, which is two less than last month. And for the month of December, there were sixty inmates, which was two last, than last month incarcerated in the facility. Monthly average total, Silver City PD had eighty-three. They booked in eighty-three, New Mexico State Police twenty-three, Grant County Sheriff's Department twenty-three, Santa Clara nine, Baird fourteen, Hurley two, adult probation one, and none from West New Mexico University. The detention facility conducted sixteen district court transports. Division one had thirteen, Division two and Baird had two. Silver City Municipal Court had seven, Santa Clara had zero, Baird had two, and Hurley had zero. Again, we had three medical transports, and that was three more than we had last month. And that was only because the inmates themselves decided that they wanted to go to a different medical facility. So under our current contract that we have now, they're able to do that, but they have to pay upfront. It's not a cost, it's incurred by, by the county. So they opted to go ahead and do that. If they needed to go to, you know, somewhere else, they wanted to go to, you know, a different doctor. They signed a form saying that they're paying upfront, and we make sure that that's done. And then we go ahead and transport them to any of those other medical facilities that they want to go to. Total number of transports for the month of December were forty-three as compared to forty. And again, the three were the three medical transports. Utilization and occupancy, sentenced, we had twenty-one inmates that had been sentenced. We had a hundred and fifteen that were unsentenced. Hours in custody was fourteen thousand and twenty-five. Offense levels were twenty-eight felonies, seventy misdemeanors, probation violations and warrants were ninety-four, which is a total of a hundred and ninety-two. And all of these are, these are people that were booked in. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're the ones that stayed in the facility. Some of them bonded out, some of them were released on their own recognizance. So that's why, those numbers, when you look at them, they seem different from the ones that I've been telling you, the first part of the numbers, because those are the ones that we actually have in the facility. And the total hours in custody are twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight hours. Average length of stay is seven point three five days. And again, the statistics show a slight decrease as compared to last month. I stand for any questions?
Some questions for Mike?
Yeah, just one, Mike. A few years ago, we were having some problems in sentencing as far as in lieu of felonies. They were being, pleading out to misdemeanors and then spending the three hundred and sixty-four days in the county jail, which is quite a cost to the county. Has that changed or is that still going on?
You know, since I've been there, I haven't, I have not, I really haven't been able to get a handle on that. But I have not seen, I have not seen a whole lot of that. I did, I did, when I was indemnifying, I did see a lot of that happening, especially with the DWIs. But I have not seen that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend Mike and his staff. And Lieutenant Aguirre, he was, we didn't really have a good, strong training program. We did training, but we didn't have a set curriculum going in there. Officer Aguirre, at the time, had come to me, Bronn Aguirre, and talked with me about trying to implement something in there. Took a lot of initiative. When Mike got in there, he started working with Mike as well and kind of put together this training program. They're using from nothing. And they've now got a, I think it's a forty-hour training program for new officers that we never had, where they spent forty hours in class before they even put out into the field. All the other types of training that were required to have for the officers in there, first aid, the defensive tactics, the pepper spray that we use. Bronn really put together a good program and really worked well with those employees from nothing. And I think he really, I know he gets a check because it's his job, but, I mean, he really went above and beyond. And all those guys did in there. And we've kind of created this program that we're, as Bronn moved up from sergeant to lieutenant, right now he's an acting lieutenant, we're looking at filling that training position temporarily, trying to find someone that can take over. And he's still working with it. But we wouldn't have had it if it wasn't for those guys. Abby had been on me. Because every time we had an incident in there, that seemed like what came up is we lacked some piece of training. And, and so, really appreciate those guys doing that because it really has saved us. It's helped out a lot. It's reduced the issues that we have because our people are trained well. Not that they weren't trained before, but now we've got this set curriculum. So everybody's being trained the same, not just whoever got you trains you the way they learn. Bronn really has a good set criteria that he trains by. And, I mean, I really am grateful for him coming to me and putting this together. And Mike continuing to work with him, and Joseph, and Abby, you know, those guys all put that together. And it's really saving the county a lot of money. Even though we have kind of created this position, it saves us a lot in the long run, not getting those torques or, and keeping our people trained. It keeps everybody safe in the facility, the inmates and the staff. So I'd just like to commend him.
We're in line.
Absolutely. Mike, on page, and it says one oh one at the bottom, but it's jail utilization and occupancy. And it says other sentenced. Is that the same as adjudicated?
Yes, sir. Actually, what that is, is it's those individuals that have been booked into the facility, they have been charged and have been booked in, but they're either through warrants or probation violations and those types of things. So we're having, as you can see, we're having an issue with a number of those individuals. The majority of the inmates that do come in have been arrested on warrant for failure to appear, failure to comply with conditions of the judges and also probation, adult probation violations.
But they've been sentenced?
They have. They've been sentenced prior to, and they have violated those conditions.
Violated, okay.
Waiting for a hearing on the violence.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Unless there's any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board. I'll start real quick with the Public Works Department. You know, the Conference Center is the biggest thing we're tackling, trying to keep up with the demand there. I mean, it is being used on a daily basis, even on the weekends, along with Fort Baird. Now, the Forest Service will be using it quite a bit. Training is coming up for them. Freeport McMoran has contacted us too. They want to do some training there for about two months. And so it's being used every day, so we're trying to keep up with that. Trying to go through with the Public Works Director, Justin Reese, and looking at our facilities, Fort Baird, the Conference Center, and what are our biggest issues in those areas, even the Silver Street building. And so they're working real hard, like I said, just the demand on keeping up with the Conference Center. That thing is used on a daily basis, and that's Monday through Sunday. Same with that Fort Baird. People are looking, always concerned about, you know, where we're going with the building. You know, they're trying to reserve it years in advance. And so we have to be careful with that, you know, letting people know, especially if it's a big event. But we are getting bigger and bigger events there. So we're just trying to keep up with the demand, making sure that the facility has the, you know, the restrooms are clean and, you know, everything is in proper order. Working with the Public Works Director, make sure that somebody is either on call or will be on staff that day on those big events. So that's what we're doing, the Public Works, going to do some painting in some of the facilities and just keep the maintenance costs. And that way, in the long term, it won't cost us as much to maintain these buildings. Senior programs are running pretty smooth. We did have a break-in for the senior program and the Silver Senior Building. Just, I believe, some kids might have had some calic... Just, I believe, if some kids might have had some pellet guns for Christmas, and shut out some windows, shut out the windows of one of the new vehicles that we had there. But I did go and check it with Terry, the director. We went and looked at it on Saturday night. Had the Public Works employees go over there on Sunday and just take a look at it, tape in case, because the windows are shattered, but they're, they've got that wire in there kindness, holding it together, but still you can have some injuries there if someone's not aware of that. So I'm going to get with Terry today and see where we are with that. Cover Caminos, I know we were working with Kim, the director, or working with Commissioner Hall, on trying to see about a route out to Cliff area. Unfortunately, one of the employees had a death in the family, so we'll kind of hold on that. They're living in chaos over there. So our prayers go out to her and her family, and so that's where we're at with that. On the FMO side, we had a fire yesterday, Tyrone, mile marker 21. I was able to get out there and keep it down to about an acre. Was human caused, so I just want to urge the public to be cautious. It's very dry out there. We don't usually have, well, I shouldn't say we usually, but now, in the last two to three years, temperatures are in the 50s, and that is warm for this time of year. So the fuels are just drying more and more as the days, as the, as the days go by with that type of temperature. We're hoping to get some moisture here. I am going to get with Gabe Holden to come in front of the commission, hopefully the next meeting in February, give an update on our conditions in Grant County and where we're at, what we see, working with him. We're, right now, a lot of the VFDs are going to go through the refresher training and keep their members up on firefighting. I'll be attending some training with Silver Fire at their facility. And so, just, again, I urge the public to be cautious about burning trash outside. It was a small fire, we kept it down an acre, good response from the Tyrone Volcano Fire Department. But if it did get jump over the highway there and go up towards Jack's Peak, who knows what would have happened then. But we were able to contain it to the highway. We did have to stop the traffic for a while, because the smoke was so thick, visibility was about zero. So we were able to do that. Other than that, I don't have anything. Again, we're just, everybody coming off of vacations and trying to get back to work, and I'm going to start working with, getting more involved in the directorship of where we go in on the budget side, along with what our role is in the community.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Is anybody having questions for Randy? Okay. Thank you very much. Earl, how's the road?
Chairman, Commissioners, pretty much back to, back to business usual down at the Road Department. We have done some repair work out on Seapar Road, the Mangus Valley Road. We've got about a half a mile repair work to do out on the Red Rock Road, we'll probably start on next week. Wasn't able to get this patched out here yet, because Southwest kind of took off for the holidays too, and then I had a bunch of people off, because they weren't able to take off during the summer, and we was having all those rains. So I was down to three or four people for the last couple of weeks. I finally got everybody back, and I'm hoping the type of mix that they're using the next couple of days is the wrong kind of mix that we want to use out here in front, but they said they should be done by Thursday, so I'm hoping to get this patched out here in front by Thursday. And as John said, we're trying to figure out some way to come up with some money or some kind of a fix to do that whole parking lot for right now. So it will be just a patch job until we hopefully come up with something permanent out there. Other than that, it's about it.
Any questions for Earl? I haven't had any complaints, so must be doing just fine. Share.
Thank you, Chairman. And just want to report, we had a fairly quiet holiday season, so I'm thankful for that. A lot of the people enjoyed their holidays and kept crime down quite a bit. I want to go over our stat report for the last year of 2013. In the sheriff's office, we handled 3,786 calls per service. That's slightly down from last year. Last year, we had 4,006, so that's like a 6% decrease. We had, we took 100, 1,561 reports, which is down from last year, also 269, a 17% decrease. And then we investigated 91 motor vehicle collision reports this year, which is down also from last year. Staff has really been working hard, dealing with the community, being more active, more involved, and this shows that they're, they're out there, working, doing their job and bringing the crime down quite a bit. In regards to our civil division, that one was not a decrease. That one actually went up. For 2013, we served 7,087 papers, which include DVOs, notices, subpoenas, summons, and writs. That increased by 685 from last year, which is a 9% increase. The civil process division did 40,527 miles doing transports from local areas, ports to the prisons, back and forth, which is an increase of 4,000 miles from last year, which is a 10% increase. So my civil division has really been busy. We're shorthanded one person back there. We were able to hire a temporary to fill in while we're dealing with this. But, you know, I want to thank the staff, because they, we had a really good year, and I look forward to another year. Hopefully, our stats will go down a little bit more, and we continue to operate. So I look forward to working with you guys another year. And I'll probably have to report unless you have any questions?
No, thank you, Sheriff. Is there any other questions, Sheriff? I have none either, so thank you very much. Madam Assessor?
Chairman, Commissioners, now that it's the first of the year, I want to mention a few things that are benefits to Grant County. If you're 65 or older, and you're in a residence less than 30,000 a year, combined with becoming a household, you can freeze your valuation on your primary residence. If you're a veteran, you're entitled to $4,000 off your taxable value. That's a savings of about $74 a year. If you're a disabled veteran, your primary residence can be tax exempt. Everyone is entitled to a family exemption on their primary residence. This is $2,000 off your taxable value. If you own a manufactured home, now is the time to call and come by our office, or come by our office, and let us know if you've made any changes to the mobile home. That'll keep you from getting a 5% penalty on your taxes. If you own livestock, now is the time to report your livestock to avoid penalty on your taxes. If you own a business, now is the time to report your business fixtures and equipment to also avoid that penalty. You have two months to report your manufactured home, your livestock, and your business to avoid penalty. I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to put this in the newspaper, under legal notices, so that everybody will be aware of it. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Chairman. I have no report.
No report. I think we'll move back and go to the Planning Department and see if Anthony has anything to say at this time then.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. But a couple of things to report. We did receive some word yesterday that our colonias allocation for the colonias infrastructure fund is finally in the works. I think it's right now, it's illegal, so we should be receiving those agreements any time now. Those are, we were expecting to see them, receive them sometime like last October, but many things are moving. We are going to, though, go ahead and, and begin our project using our in-kind to go ahead and get the survey and stuff done on North Hurley, so we can get those drainages started. Speaking with representatives from Engineers, Inc., they felt that if we went ahead and got started, we could go ahead and apply for construction dollars in the next round, which would, are due March 14th. So hopefully, we'll get the agreement before the next round of applications are due, and so we can show that we are actually starting the project. Actually, the Finance Authority, I think, still knows better. Also, report on North Hurley project. I think that all they're lacking is the lift station. Now they're waiting on it, they had ordered it, and there was some issues regarding being able to, on the availability of that lift station. So as soon as they get it, they'll install it, and that project should be pretty, pretty close to complete. Otherwise, I've been working on capital outlay, just finished up right now on the questionnaire, so hopefully, everything's in order for our capital outlay. But that's about all I got there.
Okay. Any questions for Anthony? No? Okay. John?
Just wanted to, we've talked about it every meeting, getting ready to go into session. Starts the 21st, goes through the 20th of February. Not going to be, by everything we've heard, it's not going to be a good session. It's going to be a battle. So we're going to be up there, be prepared to testify when we need to, and work behind the scenes when we need to, work with other counties and the Association of Counties to try and make sure that legislation that hurts us, unfunded mandates, we can try and stop the issues we have. We had them last year, is you get towards the end, and things start to get consented out that never even go for a vote or go for testifying. And so, it's, we learned a lot last year, I think the chairman and I, on how it works, and, and be more prepared this year. But a lot of it's out of our control. I mean, so we'll fight as much as we can. Soul Community Provider will be the big piece that we're always watching for, to make sure that we're keeping the hospital whole, and the citizens of Grant County whole, and whatever aspect comes out of that, the solution. They're going to, my understanding is, they're trying to go with the hold harmless that they took away last year. They enacted where the counties and municipalities could go out for 3 1/8 increments of tax without going to the voters. One of the representatives now has come back and decided that that was too much, that he would like to cut it back to 3 1/16 increments. And any municipality or county that already enacted the 1/8 would be reduced automatically to 16ths, which, I guess for Grant County, if you looked at it, we lose about $360,000 to $400,000 on Soul Community Provider, and 8th brings about $600,000. So 3 1/16ths would bring us about $800,000 to $900,000. When you look at the town of Silver City, in conversations with Alex, they lose about $1.4 million, and 3 8ths would only bring them about $900,000. So 3 1/16ths is, kind of cut that in half for them, and so there's going to be nowhere close to whole if that happens. So I don't know what their logic is. They felt like the 8ths were a windfall for the counties. And so the Municipal League has put forward legislation this year, to try and support legislation to put the food tax back on. That's something that the Association of Counties, when they met jointly with the Municipal League, said that they're not supporting. It's so, it's not a priority for the Association of Counties, it's not something we're going to go out and lobby for. It's a Municipal League deal, that they're looking at pushing something for, it's one of their priorities, to, that if they're going to take away the hold harmless, just put the tax back on food, let the state take care of that issue, not put it on the burden on to the municipalities and the counties to take care of that. There's, the trainings go on that first week, so there'll be a bunch of us up there for the training in that first week, and then the second week is the prospectors, where they go up, it's the 29th, is Grant County Day, where they'll be trying to meet with cabinet secretaries, and I think they always try and meet with the lieutenant governor. Don't seem to get into the governor in this administration. They used to get into the governor in the former administration sometimes, or the lieutenant governor, so I haven't seen the full schedule of what secretaries they have lined up, but we'll be there and participate in that as well, and try and support the Grant County priorities from, that are from municipalities and agencies in Grant County, or fiscal agent for a few of them. I think we're getting close on the New Mexico Finance Authority piece. We're just waiting on the State Environment Department to release our money that we had for the planning grant for the, we looked at a preliminary engineering report on extending the water from the old Fort Baird to the new Fort Baird Medical Facility. So that's pretty close to being done. Don't know if the project will go anywhere, but the report that we were asked to do was done, and we should be funded back for it. I talked with the State Secretary Burkle, they got the expression of interest out on selling Fort Baird without demolishing the old hospital, looking at it. I know at one point in time, there was one company that was interested. I don't know if anybody turned in anything under the expression of interest. So I know there was questions, but it seemed like when there was the tour that they came down for, it was mostly local people on the tour, they just wanted to have answers as to what's going to happen. And so those questions were answered and sent back out, and also sent out by the preservation group that works out there, we're circulating again, that Mariannes is part of. They're wanting to sell off, keep 50 acres for future expansions of Fort Baird Medical Center, keep some land for expansion of the federal cemetery. Representative Martinez would like to keep some land, because the Pauper Cemetery is filled up, and so he said they need to consider that, that that cemetery is full. I don't think they have many burial sites left in there, and that's where indigent burials happen, is in the Pauper Cemetery, not at Fort Baird Medical Center, or the old fort. And, and so if they sell, the one thing they said is that they will not give the water rights with the land, they'll lease the water rights, which is going to make it hard to get rid of that property, because it's worthless without water.
I just want to make sure that whoever does purchase it keeps access to our community, because if they're going to sell to someone and take access away, then that, I think that's a big hindrance to our, to our residents. So I, I have heard of a few entities that were interested and wanted to lock it up and do their own thing, and I don't want that. I'm definitely not for that.
Well, the requirements under the state law is that property control go in front of the legislature for permission to dispose of that property, to sell it. So if they're going to do something, we'll see legislation go out, and it'll have to go. And at that point, we'll have time to talk with our representatives and senators, and talk with committee members about concerns. But that's the first step they have to do before they can dispose of any property, they have to go in front of legislature. So we should see it in this 30-day session, if they truly are going to do something. So we're working on those. We're working on our capital projects that are our top three priorities, as Anthony presented before to the commission. Working on, with Commissioner Hall, we've got some meetings coming up on the continuum of care that he's been working on, to try and do some things there. It's going to be a very busy, very busy session, but hopefully, it'll be productive instead of detrimental to us. But you never know, it's going to be an ugly fight till late in the evening some nights, is what we're being told.
May I ask you anything?
Well, the situation when the people were down here, they also said they wanted to set aside 100 acres for veterans with no specifications what for veterans, but that was in addition to the 50 for the Department of Health, 20 for the cemetery.
Okay. Any questions for John? No? Commissioner?
Well, I just wanted to mention that our Echo Watership Group has been meeting. It's really been a good group, a lot of input coming from a lot of people with experience. So it's been really good. We're working on a mission statement at this point. As soon as we actually approve the mission statement and our five priorities, I'll bring him to you for, probably not, not for Thursday, but for our next meeting. We do have our next Echo Watership meeting, board, a board meeting on January 15th at 3 o'clock in these chambers. Okay? So, you know, it's really, like I said, it's been really good. Gilbert Helton was, was a real good asset to have at our last meeting, so if he could continue to keep coming, he's, he's been really good for us. At this point, that's pretty much all I've got. I want to thank Commissioner Hall for making the transit meeting, this, this last, this last meeting that had taken place. It kind of jumped, jumped over on this meeting here, so on the Echo Watership meeting. So I'm going to have to do a better job of planning our meetings. But again, that's pretty much all I've got at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Several things to report. One, John and I have been talking about, we've had some issues in our community, in our county as far as some abandoned mobile homes and other things that are making our county look pretty bad. And so I've talked to John about maybe putting together a, a citizen committee to address that, and of course, I would participate in that, along with some other county Of course, I would participate in that along with some, uh, other county, uh, employees. And so we're going to put that together to try to address it. We've done it before several years ago. I don't remember, I don't know if you, you guys were involved in it or not, but we, there were some problems with some property rights and such as this and, and, but, uh, we're going to try to look at what we did in the past and see if we can better it. The other thing, it's already been talked about, the Corvita Camino, we're really excited about. In fact, Mr. Cuff, the, uh, my mayor of the Cliff Hila, uh, area is here today and, uh, and, uh, we've been working on that, trying to get something going on that along with Randy, and I appreciate the work that Randy's been doing on it. Uh, the continuum of care is a huge issue and, and something that's taken a lot of work. We've got some terrific help from the, uh, hospital as far as loaning a staff member to us, uh, working through, trying to find out exactly what we do have, what we don't have and what we need to go and where to go, business plan and the whole thing. So we appreciate that. She's very valuable to us. And mainly the thing we're working on is the detox part, but the continuum from prevention clear through long-term care. And so it's a long process. Um, we continue to work on the Cliff Hila Rec slash Community Center, uh, talking to John yesterday. Uh, we're going to be coming out with a, a, um, a, uh, what am I, the bid, the bid, uh, to get the work done, the work that we're having done out there now is going to be to build a bathrooms, uh, kitchen and a substation, uh, and a storage room. And the end result is to share that building with others, uh, so that in summer and winter, then the, that area will have someplace that they can go and, and have, and have activities. Um, and last, I just continue to go to meetings, uh, that I think that impacts the county and on my district, and they're too numerous to even talk about right now. So I, I want to thank the staff. I want to wish everyone a happy new year, and I think it's going to be a great one. And I challenge everyone to make it the best because it takes each and every one of us to accomplish that. So we all have to try our hardest. And I have, I, I think it's going to happen. It's going to be a good, a good year, two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm just about to lose my voice, so I am going to spare you today and I'll do my report on Thursday.
It began in Port Hurley, just to the cloud, huh?
Yes. So at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, no, second.
I was favor six five, say no.
Hi.